This conference will now be recorded.
We actually took care of it because they were seeing that his capital, she was just bitching. She had to try to be able to take care of it. I mean, we're trying to get her to work, she should know what they've already attacked. By how they do this, they have to be so much less.
Remember that we are, it was two weeks and fourteen days, but they didn't.
About hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's still about hundred thousand, sure.
We'll see in our next.
We'll see on the news, so that's why it's so low. And also that we did receive the relief fund, the 1.4 million dollars Friday. So that will be going into the next year budget, 2021.
Can you discuss for, correct?
Just for confirmation, that's what we're approving Friday.
Friday, in a second.
Do you have any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, just want to kind of discuss the COVID stuff. I'm just drawn that nobody wants to meet anymore, but COVID is looking like it's starting to uptick a little bit more. So there is a possibility that we may have to adjust to the operations accordingly. Right now, we're looking decent, but they have, we have started seeing a spike in COVID cases, especially in Lake County. So just want to give you a heads up on that. Also, we did the summer part movies. Friday is our, this coming Friday is our last one for the season. So if anybody would like to come out, it'll be Godzilla versus King Paul the Great. So that'll be the last showing of the movies, barring any weather changes as we get for that. That's all I have to work for.
Turn your discussion. Chief, who is that? Who's that?
Who is it?
Uh, well, we don't want to spoil it, so definitely not to say it. It starts, so we usually kick off about eight, eight-thirty, depending on the sundown. Yes, sir.
Senior citizens on Tuesday and other activities, when do you expect that to be operational?
Right now, they're already operating, they should be operating at a percent where they can do the full facility.
They decided, I guess they're just splitting on management too. Or have they announced it or something, they mentioned they announced it on?
No, they, they had, Friday they already had a training that they had to go to, so they did have to shut down a little early. But they should be running for, except for the hours, they're running the same thirty-four hours that we've been running regularly, the rest of the city with. So, but they are open Monday through Friday.
Sure, you can put it straight up in the year.
Uh, currently right now, we got one position that we still have open. So we're almost, almost to this step. I think we had a part-time turn there on Sunday, so we shouldn't be going out to, prior to that position too.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bo. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bernard.
Yeah, I guess this is from Chief, I was gonna ask, have we had any activity at the center, the U Center, or any rentals that they just did right now?
No, we, we've had a couple of rentals, yes, sir. As far as I know, I think we've had three, two or three. So there, it has been being used, we do have Maria, who's our full-time staff over at the U Center, has been going over there through Mondays and Fridays to ensure that it's clean. And then, and ready for any rentals, and then she's using her other time at the Senior Citizen, so Senior Citizen Center. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Con.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Gay. Thanks, sir. Jayden.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Turn to discuss with Jayden. Why you get scared just?
I know that, that was really been addressed, but out to our old dump site, they've just been saying, you know, spend old main container out there. Is that container still out that side or has it been cut up for parts, destroyed, stolen, or is it?
Commissioner, it is actually still out there, as you, as you did say, it is, has been cut up by people going out there and actually stealing parts off of it, and it's inoperable. It is just mainly just junk out there. I know that we, years and years ago, we were going to have the state come in and work with us on actually filling in all that stuff and abandoning the sites as far as a waste site, but I have no, I have not heard anything from, on that facility at all.
Okay, I, you know, I can be blessed, but I, I have been out to that site and, where it was set.
So.
And so it is all the books and everything?
Yes, sir, as far as I believe, but I can definitely look into that. And I believe that it's not on our fixed asset list as far as the maintenance, maintainer, the loader itself, or the dozer, but I can definitely look into that.
All right, thank you. White.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, I'd just like to give you a brief of, we are meeting with, there's actually four of us, actually five, meeting with New Mexico DOT on Wednesday morning to discuss a couple of different projects. The main project coming up into the city of Leavington, and I have reached out for the timeline, and then I'm going to actually pin them down at that meeting. They're shuffling me around from New Mexico DOT to Constructors, Inc., and they're back and forth with who's gonna release that information. But we're just gonna go ahead and give them a brief, just who do I need to contact, which their main, main supervisor on the job and kind of just mainly find out the roles and everything else we need to, as the city, need to help them out on that project. The brief updates, the monthly meetings that they plan on having, having myself or David, or the mayor, anybody, any, any other commissioner, anybody's more welcome to join in on those meetings. So as soon as I do get a specific date on when they're, have those meetings every month, I will definitely send an email out to each of you guys and let you guys know. But New Mexico DOT project, I know the main, right there on Main and Jefferson, it's a constant coming out. We've had the crews out here every Monday, they're on the same situation as us, as far as callouts, overtime, everything. So the best bet, what I instructed my street crews to do is just go put the, go put the barrels out there prior to it getting beat out and we have more damage done to city, or vehicles inside the city. But they're, they're waiting, they know, they don't want to put no more extra money into it because they're gonna be ripping it up here shortly. So we've stretched to them that it is a headache for the city to, the customers and everyone inside, citizens of the city to have it, have it done. But they are addressing it almost every Monday morning and throughout the week to fill those potholes in. Other than that, just to let you guys know, we are meeting with the mayor of the State Environment Department tomorrow for the wastewater treatment plant. They're just gonna do a brief walkthrough, kind of go over the plant with us and just kind of see. There's no regulatory committee that's coming down, it's actually just somebody to walk through and kind of see how the plant's running and if they can give us some hints on it or anything like that, they're gonna go and let us know what's going on and kind of give us some advice and everything else. We're, we're up to par, we, we have all of our state regulations in for discharge permits and everything like that, sampling is all, all good. They just, we, we drew the magic short stroller, the ticket for them to come down and walk through our facility. So just let you know that I will have an update on that. We're gonna write a report, so hopefully I'll have it at the next one, if not, it will be the following commission meeting that I'll give the report. And that's all that I have.
Do you have further discussion?
When is the, when is the date on that? Start, start as Main Street, the?
August eighteenth.
August eighteenth.
Yes, sir.
That's what they're shooting.
That's what they're shooting for, they start as, the start of phase one, which is from commercial to Main and Avenue D. And it's gonna be mainly, currently right now, the, yes, the retention pond and getting all the utilities and everything. But as far as they use the wrap-up time for their utility progress or process, find, trying to locate and make sure that everything is where they know it is. But obviously eighteen, so, but I'll find a, for sure, start date tomorrow, or Wednesday.
He's just, anyway, on the, on top of it, somewhere, I was just, I remember there was a barrel out there the other day, that couldn't be flooded, so.
They flipped, they flipped the manhole lid off, so the water and everything else, the, it sucked it up right off and disappeared. So they went and put barrels until they got enough water moved away to get it put back. But it did actually suck the manhole lid completely off. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Turn to further discussion. Thank you, love. Turn to Patrick.
Nothing new to report.
Turn. Further discussion with Patrick. Moving on to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to invite you all, as well as some of our head departments, to join us tomorrow for Demo Day. We have finally concluded the second session of our food truck program, and we are going to be able to show off their concepts, what they've learned, and also present them with a graduation certificate. It will be after hours from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Tam Hall, and we'd really love to see you guys out there. The candidates are extremely grateful for the opportunity to participate in the program and as well as being in Leavington. Most of them are from Hobbs, so they have been driving over here for our program, and so they're super excited. A couple of them had even talked about how much they love Leavington and the community itself, and are hoping to be able to transition or open up their program or their own food restaurant or truck here in Leavington. So it would be great to have you guys out there, and we'd love to have your support. That's all I have.
If, if someone is interested in, in that, would it be good for them to show up to this, tomorrow night, or?
Honestly, yes. Like I said, they're gonna talk about what some of the things that they learned, they're gonna go over a lot of what they experienced during the program. So it would be a wonderful opportunity for anybody interested in going into the food truck or restaurant program.
Okay, 'cause I've had several people ask me, and I, I wasn't for sure, I knew you were in charge, so they can come, exit contact you?
Yes, they should be contacting us, yes, they're, and we do have, it is actually up on our website, leavingtonmainstreet.org, that, there's like a tab on there that literally talks about the food truck program, availability, and how they can apply for it. So it's awesome, they can also check it out too. Okay, no problem, thank you, guys.
No other public comments, moving on to you. Not actually, not, white, okay.
Sorry, Evelyn just reminded me again here. We also have an extension on facade improvement grant that is going to be due this Saturday, July 31st. Anybody interested in the behind-the-facade funding, again, that is a $10,000 match for any building in the downtown for improvement and bringing it up to code, that includes major infrastructure repairs such as HVAC roof, plumbing, electrical, all of that stuff.
Not actually, not, what?
Mayor and Commissioners, it was brought, still when James was here, city manager, and it was brought to work with the county and talking with the county about our solid waste facility. And the county actually met with us back in, I believe, February, and we did a walkthrough of our solid waste facility with the county and as a partnership of kind of seeing what we could do a little bit better with our solid waste facility. The county has brought it to us that they would like to actually go in partnership and rework the facility and make it almost as same as what they currently hold in Hobbs, they own the Hobbs facility, and it would be open seven days a week. So it would be a little bit better for the patrons and everything else, and for the city of Leavington and county, all on this north side, working Tatum and everything, coming down. Sorry, but Mr. Dean Jackson, county commissioner, is here, so if you guys have any other questions, I know he was definitely working with. Yep, I do. Do you have any other questions? He's actually sat down, the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, and kind of talked about it a little bit more briefly, and kind of discussion of what, what the next process might be and everything. I know currently the county would like to take over the full site for the street yard. That would definitely, in light, bring, bring a little bit more of the county equipment over here for emergency management, emergency personnel, their roadwork equipment and everything else, so as far as. The whole site available to them, that's what they would be wanting, or, I don't know if there's anything else that you would like to?
You know, we're willing to spend five to six hundred thousand dollars revamping the whole facility, and like I said, we would want to take it completely over. We would be interested in, you know, keeping our road department, stuff that was up north, down here, and, you know, I just think the people of the northern part of the county have needed this for a long time, I don't know how many of you went to dump something and you have to drive to Hobbs, well, there's no sense in that, and we can do it right here. The turnaround time, I don't think it would be very long, I wouldn't say over a month or so. Like I said, we would revamp the whole thing, just like I said, partnership with City of Leavington.
Now, a little bit to elaborate on the meeting, we had, just like Commissioner Dean had said, 600K investment. Currently, the city operates at, on our last fiscal year, is a 250K loss for our last fiscal year, 2021. So it's a $250,000 loss, so it would be another, we would look at not, a savings for us of $250,000 without having to operate that. So we currently operate 34 hours a week, and only about four and a half days a week. They would come in, bring their road department in, operate it seven days a week, at no charge to our, our citizens, which is a win-win for them, is a win-win for the whole community, and like I said, for seven days a week, and then we have the, currently have the road department plus more employment for, we probably have a staff of five there, so that's probably any of the staff, we have two full-time, five, but maybe paid for by the county, but it'll be also, it'll be employed a little bit more, but I think it could be into our community seven days a week, free of charge.
Well, you know, anybody that's up north, you know, taking crossroads, if they gotta drive all the way to Hobbs, that is, that's a day, that's a day. And I don't know how many of you, I know I have, drove out here and it'd be closed, then you gotta drive on the Hobbs. And you gotta secure your load before you get out on the highway, so, you know, I think it'd be a win-win.
And, and when they're talking about takeover, so they will own about seven acres, right, what, seven acres it sits on, and it'd be pretty much, we gotta go to legal, but it'll be transferred over to the county, and, but that cost saves them $250,000. If we want to go buy seven acres, guarantee you can buy seven acres under 250, it'll cost savings per year, so that's something else, hard on cost, and so, but, that's what I told you about. What was, usually with that money, that case, that's even what I was saying about, for his road charter.
My, my streets facility, they would be losing seven acres worth of storage almost, so we do have a building that they could go into. It's a, it's a way reduced lot, so talking with Mayor Trujillo and the county did throw a couple of things at them, and I know it's a partnership, and they're, they're looking at investing the 600,000, the more into that facility. So I know in the next couple of years, I would like to see possibly acquiring some property right on the outskirts or possibly right on the edge. I know the city owns the 56 acres going on the Arkansas Junction, that we can dedicate some of that for actually material storage to help out a lot, because we're gonna be losing a lot, but in regards to having the facility closed, or I completely understand that people go on a, say, Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday afternoon, and we do have facilities shut, and we do, it's maybe capacity issues, or we're, we're short-staffed, and we actually close the facility on Thursdays to go help out another department. So we do operate Wednesdays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, so we're only open four days a week. And the county would open it, operate it seven days a week, so it'll be a major, major opening and everything for the, but they still might run into the capacity issues that we do. We, we have days that they go out there and we get 100 vehicles come through, and we just don't have the cans pooled in time or waste management to go over, so. But it is, my guys out there, they do 100% good job, nothing against them, but I completely understand working with the county and making something, making something happen. But there is going to be completing 250, $54,000 that we lost last year for the solid waste, but there will be some things that we need to do if we do go with the whole, the whole facility and everything on.
So explain the partnership, that's the only thing I'm, sounds like a term, but I don't see no partnering, this city, that state open. It's, we're not, I'm not wrong with it, you know, we have a facility.
Well, the partnership comes in, where we're trying to help the city of Leavington, you know, just like we do every community.
Okay, so basically, you're coming in, taking over property, converting to the county, which benefits the community through the continued four, seven-day-a-week operation.
Yes, yes.
And just, and all the employees, you know, we pay, and we fully staff every day.
And just want to make sure I understood exactly, terminology.
And, and part of that 600K was doing landscaping too, so they plan to put some landscape right here off the, off that commercial.
Landscaping, and if you've been to the Hobbs facility, you know how the cement drive-ups are, we would be doing that, you know, just clean the whole thing up.
I was gonna be taking, no, I haven't been to the Hobbs facility, I just drive out here to bug out. They went separate, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Two questions, yes, sir. Dean, or, or why, what would happen to, we have two employees out there right now.
Oh, definitely, to them. We actually discussed that originally with the county, they do have their full staff that they would either hire or bring over. So with the 108 employees that the city does, do currently employ, we would definitely be able to transfer them to a different department within the city or transfer, I know they go and help out cemetery once a week, so we could definitely possibly move that one, one over there and then move one over to another facility that needs this.
One last question, what, what timeframe are we looking at to begin this process?
No, it was a discussion, discussion for you guys tonight, and we would like to move forward and seeing what the next step. I know meeting with Mike Gallagher, David, he was supposed to meet with him last week, I'm not sure if that happened or not, to discuss. I know it's gonna have to go through the Department of Finance, and I believe it's the Department of Finance, to find out about the appraisal on the property and seeing exactly the transfer of, transfer of the property over to the county, but there is paperwork trail, so what direction from you guys on the next step of something you guys would like to see us move forward on? We'll definitely get working on the paperwork.
I sort of appreciate that, Jimmy.
Thank you, all.
Jackson, thank you for inviting me very much, I'm not opposed to it at all.
I think it's an excellent idea to keep some people up north, those haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll catch a burger when they come in.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
We'll move forward on, thank you.
Thank you all.
Further discussion, is there any other discussion? Further discussion, moving on to that, actually, I have motion.
Very likely to make a motion, Civil Resolution 2021-046, Restaurant Beer and Wine License for Burger Builders.
Also, a motion paid by Commissioner Con, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. White.
I'd like to pass this one over to Shannon, she's worked with Burger Builders in all the advertising and everything she has, all the information.
Martine Lauren, she's the one that's made this, she's the owner of Burger Builders now, and he would like y'all to approve his beer and wine restaurant license. And it has been advertised, according to what they require, so this is up to y'all.
Shannon, will this approve through the state as well, is that correct?
It will be pending your, your approval.
Commissioner Gay.
This is for the city of my life. In my business.
Turn to another discussion.
Turn around, it's just, I would like to make my motion. It's very, to reflect that the resolution be approved.
I'll second that motion. Made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bernard. To approve, restaurant license for Burger Builders, roll call motion.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Mr. Hard is.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passed. Do I have a motion?
Just very likely to make a motion to consider resolution 2021-049. Appointment to the Parks Recreation Board. Yes, I'd like to consider on this billing of Dean and Joe Wallace. Service.
Second by Commissioner Gandy. Turn around, discussion.
Mayor Commissioners, I do have Mr. Joe Wallace here. He'd like to be explaining. I believe he moved to the City of Loveington two years ago and he just wanted to get more involved. He did reach out to the city and asked to be considered to put on the board.
Good evening, everybody. Like I said, my name's Joe Wallace and it's been about three, three and a half years I've been in Loveington. We moved from South Texas. We, we've came to Loveington and fell in love with it, planted roots. And I wanted to be involved with the community and want to help out wherever I can. Be considered for the board, I think, maybe some fresh ideas I have to bring in or help out.
Yeah, I appreciate you stepped forward.
What part of South Texas is Joe?
Just outside of Corpus Christi, Alice, Texas.
Yeah, I know, you know, we noticed the palm trees.
Yes, well, I love you guys.
We're in the rain, we brought all this rain. I thought you were late, but it's here.
Everybody says palm trees are pretty, but when you have them all the time, they bring in rodents and pests.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it's awesome to be away from.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for offering this role.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion? There's no further special call motion.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Very likely to make a motion for resolution 2021-051, fourth quarter budget adjustment.
Seconded most of the debate by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, Treasury, Dobbs.
I was going to go down the line in the final adjustment paper you have in front of you, or hopefully. I'll just do the first one, it's $790 in the core foundation fees. It just looks like someone put the wrong account. It's supposed to be zero at the end of the year, so we just took, we just transferred that to the general fund. The number two would be the $159.74, $159.7430. We just transferred money from the general fund into that account. Number three would be the 254.210. Same thing, we always little budget, as we talked about. And we just took that from, we transferred that from the general fund into the general fund. Number four, after we got done feeding all the budgets to zero, the general fund still had any money? Yes?
I don't think we had this on.
Yes, it's on resolution. I'm sorry, I think I put this one on the resolution, the next resolution, I'm sorry. That one kind of goes in again. I'm sorry with that. I got it, yeah. When we got done with all that, the ones, the budgets we had to make at zero at the end of the year end, we still had to make a budget adjustment for the general fund. So we took that amount, we transferred the amount from the water fund and the ambulance fund to make sure the general fund had that in there for it to be required for the state. That's it. That's all the transfer that we did.
Where is your current state's research requirements by the state data?
Yes.
Also, let me clarify that we, we are in black. We have a little over $600,000 adjustment, but we are in black.
Yes, we are in black.
You see that last time, you showed in black.
Mr. Brand, just to make a point of inclusion regarding the previous resolutions, I know that they're not consequential or sequential order. There's some order of numbers that are missing, is there a reason for that?
Oh, okay, I think.
Yes, sir, it's because we forgot 46 on last agenda and then we removed 49. And so we just wanted to make up for them on this agenda.
Okay.
So that way it keeps us afloat after the 49th, so we'll go down the list.
So we've already approved 47, 48?
Yes.
And?
50, yes, sir.
Okay. David?
Thank you, sir.
And a minimal adjustment. What's it, a minimal adjustment, that's all the adjustment we can do. I want to say that we really appreciate you, Mr. Doug, for working weekends, working late hours, spending the week to get this, I hope you step into some new budget, new, new budget, new fiscal year budget, new ending budget. I appreciate all that you've done to make this happen, of course. I am personally, as a Commissioner and Mayor, I, I was happy to see what I saw here and I feel that the actual, actuals that have been made and well explained and are very, want to thank you for. I think the board of commissioners will be happy in the near future. Grace, Commissioner Bowles, right here, he likes a lot of good times. I think he's going to be happy to see what you give him in the near future. We'll keep him updated as well as his board, and it's been needed throughout the years. So we look forward to, to, they, on this type of basis.
Fair?
Yes, sir.
For the sake of transparency, tell us real break to what you see so far.
So far, it's just, I can't count fingers what, what was on the budget, what's not. It's just past the past, things we look forward. Unfortunately, this is what we have, we have a budget and, but we're not in the red, we're in the black. So it's just good, we're moving. It's just, this right here shows that we can move on to a positive direction for the city and community. That's what I can see.
Lord, thank you.
And I understand the concern for Commissioner Compost for the $600,000 adjustment, even though we did make adjustments back in March. It's just when he had a treasure, referred to treasure, when you had to go back and verify and clarify each number line to ensure that the data was correct, you're thinking of $600,000. So there's mainly just chilling right here, cleaned up about $600,000.
Yeah, that's what it was. It's just in the year, it's like this. That's what it was.
Good. Any other discussion?
Most of the debate. So that's the sort of things. Any other further discussion? Motion was made, Shannon, roll call motion.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
No.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021-052, approval for the final FY '21 budget. Seconded.
Most of the debate by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Compost. President?
She raises as a fourth quarter report, Commissioner Shannon again, with the detailed budget report. The main change here would be the magistrate, magistrate court fund. On the DFA website, they do not have a 404 code on there. So we have to, we have to combine the 404 into the 301 because the DFA have different codes of wage. So the only difference is that we separated the magistrate court amount, the bond, out of that fund 301 and put it into 404 so we can keep up with it better. Because hopefully it starts soon. So that helps us keep up with it better.
Turn around, discussion. You, both. No other discussion? Yes, sir. There's not a roll call motion?
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
No.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Go ahead, motion. Mr. Brand, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021-053, approval, authorized signatures for the Catholic state.
Thanks.
Most of the debate by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Compost.
This is just taking names off, putting names back on. So it's pretty much me, Shannon, I think it was some of this.
It's going to be, we're just adding, actually currently adding Anthony to the board.
Yeah, but this is a resolution for the DFA. And auditors, when they come and ask, we have a signature card. It makes us look better when they come and they ask for it. So it's pretty much, clean up, you'd say. And keep in us, we should be.
So Mayor Commissioners, there's currently four, four on the, on the signature card, which is myself, David Rodriguez, Terrence Lizardo, Shannon, and we're adding Anthony Dobbs to the signatures.
Turn around, further discussion? No further discussion, roll call motion.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Motion, resolution passes. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021-054, approving Dawson Geographics Company Agreement. Seconded, most of the debate by Commissioner Barnes, Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Gandy, Wyatt.
Mayor Commissioners, Dawson Geophysical Company, they approached us back, I believe in November of last year, November, December. We have been working with them to come up with a current contract and for them to actually go on to the City of Loveington property and do some seismograph and technical kind of searching out there. We did put in the contract that they have to be a minimum of, or yeah, minimum 1,000 feet away from any of our active wells or anything like that. So this is just a contract or resolution showing that we approved the contract and they're paying us the $36,000, $96,480 to come on the city property to do their testing and searching.
Where is your property located, Wyatt?
It's our city wells, which is four miles outside of town or heading south. So they have capability of going to, I believe, the whole 2,000, 2,600 acres that we have out there.
And revenue?
Yes, the revenue is the $36,000 that we would be getting off of them doing the tests.
Turn around, further discussion? No further discussion, roll call motion.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Brand, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021-055, appointment to the Southeastern Regional Transportation Plan and Sewing Committee, Technical Committee. So most of the debate by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Gandy, Wyatt.
Mayor Commissioners, the appointment for the Serpo Committee, myself. I've been on the technical committee for the past, I believe, four and a half, five years. I know there was a resolution back in, I believe, March, April, appointing myself to finish out the term for James, which he held the policy committee. James' term is fully expired. So this is just appointing me to be the sole representative until a city manager or anybody else would like to be appointed to the board. But I'd be on the policy and technical committee side for the City of Loveington.
Mr. Brand, make it my way here. Make that motion to, Mr. Wyatt, that'll be the funding to the Southeastern Regional Transportation Plan.
It's actually policy and technology.
Tech committee and policy. Maybe we'll.
Yes, sir.
Most of the debate by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Gandy, Wyatt. Is there any discussion?
This one, this is real quickly, there's a tackle on the resolution itself, describing regional. Can you see that? You find it?
Yeah.
Write a little resolution number.
Yes, sir.
I'll definitely get that changed using that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call motion.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Brand, I'd like to make a motion to consider resolution 2021-056, approval of contract with the Council of Governments.
Seconded. Most of the debate by Commissioner Compost, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. Wyatt?
Mayor Commissioners, this contract is approved each year with the Council of Governments. The city with the Council of Governments, they assist us in multiple different aspects. And this is just a contract for thus helping us out in different aspects. The contract is $3,303 for them to assist with governments and all the legislative assistance that they present. I know, I believe we did, Dora, Batistas and Hubert are some of our main contacts that they help us out with a lot of different things.
Yeah, definitely, I hope it's sound, pretty true, 2.18. So they can show their value. Partnership for this. Turn around, discussion? There's no further discussion, roll call motion.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021-057, approval of amendment. Between City of Livingston and Big Dog Industries. Motion was made by Mr. Danny, second by Commissioner Bernard. White.
Mayor Commissioners, I would actually like to have Evelyn come up. She has been with the, with doing the PPA and switching it all over, so I'll let Evelyn a little more discussion on that.
We have been in contact with the State of New Mexico Economic Development Department, and as you know, they are awarding $750,000 towards Big Dog Industries. That project is still moving forward. When the, when the agreement was put together, it was right prior to COVID hitting. So as soon as we signed the contract within a month, that's when COVID hit, got shut down. Prices of hemp went down, so they prolonged it. Now we're back and moving forward, and now we are doing the extensions of technically in one year. So we're starting all over and, and like I said, this project is looking really well and it's moving forward. Any questions for me?
So is the Big Dog Industries, they're partnering with who or they're gonna do this all?
Yeah, the agreement is with Big Dog Industries only. I mean, their partners is something that they have on their own that has nothing to do with us. It's technically, the agreement is between Brian and Big Dog Industries and the State of New Mexico.
What timeframe are we looking to really give rolling?
I will know more in the next week or two. I'm afraid to give dates because you hold me to them. So I mean, at this point, it's, it's moving forward. Know that all the partnerships are in order, agreements have all been signed. It's just now we're moving forward. If anything, I would have more information at the end of the week, so next month, next mission, you'll have, you'll have an answer.
The facility is open, ready to build?
No, sir. It's, we stopped doing renovations on that facility due to the fact that this contract was, we were waiting. Once the building is sold and then the renovation will be, will begin. So it doesn't lack much. I mean, we do have to update the fire, the fire panel alarm system has to be updated. And then we do have to partition out where the fire occurred. We do have to partition that out, so there won't, there's no access to that facility right now. And then we have to change the hardware of certain doors because the hardware is outdated. And that's it. It's the only thing that we lack to get a partial occupancy for them to use, about 40, 5,000 square feet. And then as they are in there, once they start getting up and going, then they'll begin the renovations through the front.
Mayor Commissioners, on the, on the portion that she was just talking about is that would be done after they do purchase the building to get their partial occupancy. The fire panel has to be completed. Evelyn has done all the late work for it to get those quotes. It has brought, been brought to the EDC board, and the EDC board had decided to hold off until more of the contract situation was done. So all that was put on hold until the purchase of the building was done. And Brian, Big Dog Industries will be responsible for.
Nothing else coming out of our pocket.
Continuing the rest of the work to get the partial occupancy. Evelyn, the sale is scheduled in five days, is that correct?
On Friday. A lot of cheats in. On Friday, yes.
I certainly appreciate that.
It's been, it's been tough. It's, yeah, I'm not gonna lie, it's been tough. Thank you.
And they're still finding all the employing, how many people are, how many, can they say it?
They still, just for the hemp portion of it, they, they're still planning on doing the 125, but it's gonna come to the city commission. I mean, as we know, the State of New Mexico legalized marijuana, so they are now gonna be doing hemp and cannabis in the facility. So if it was 125 just for hemp, it's gonna be, if anything, it's gonna be more than 125 because they're not adding a different industry or different product to what they were gonna be doing. But the, the PPA is only strictly for the hemp industry only. Once they, if they begin doing the manufacturing on the cannabis portion, maybe we will go back to the State of New Mexico for incentives when it comes to the cannabis manufacturing portion. But if anything, it's gonna be more than 125.
They do have to cert, meet a certain criteria throughout the stages to receive money. They have to employ a certain amount throughout.
Yes.
I can do that. No further discussion?
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mayor Trivia.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do you have a motion? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2021-058 through change in addition to signature cards. And that's the kind of favor. Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Danny, second by Commissioner Bernard, Attorney Dow.
This is pretty much the same thing we did with Lee County State Bank, since taking names off of past staff and adding names back on. So the, me, Shannon, and my deputy, I'm keeping the fourth one open for the city manager when we hired him. So when he comes, we'll have another resolution to add him on this as well.
Attorney, discussion? Here's my further discussion. Roll call motion.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mayor Trivia.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider a down payment.
Motion was made by Mr. Campos, second by Mr. Danny, Attorney Dow.
This, the council table is gonna be rated high. One, because we have a big payment of $350,000 on the loan now.
Around $39,000.
Yes, from what's it called?
Three.
For our reinsurance. So it's just one payment we pay this year, and that's why it's so high. Also, me and my staff, we're just trying to close out for the year, so we're just trying to get everything that's supposed to be changed. So that's why it's, that's why it's higher than the other.
And also, yeah, closing everything out for this full year.
Mostly that too, yeah.
Anthony, I would really like your expense approval report.
Oh, thank you. The detail one or both?
The detail.
Okay, yeah. Like I said, I'm gonna try to make the different departments versus description, kind of like it says department, maybe put a, a, their initials and what it was, so we can better find what was spent, where was it at, who did it.
I like, thank you. Are you trying to keep us rest in peace or something?
We're getting all I can.
I'm gonna agree with all this very, very good, very nice, thank you very much.
Got a couple of questions regarding these terms with the Livingston law center. There's, you know, a lot of the amounts are small, but you got two of them that are 754 hours and 80 cents worth of them.
Those are, actually, I will have to get back to you with those, I mean, the detail, or I'm sorry. Those are. Shannon, those four.
I don't see what you're seeing on the table.
Okay.
Just kind of curious, there's a lot of.
Oh, right, it's broken out like that?
Yes.
Those are the different, the different tiers and the amounts that are coming. You've got amounts coming from the city, you've got amounts coming from the employees' checks, and the different tiers that they, it's not falling to employee or employee's family.
So there's numerous employees in that department?
Oh, yeah. This is, the total was in 2,1648.
Right, I see the total.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, like, a lot of them are 28 hours, 12 hours.
It's just how it breaks out, it's not an apartment. And.
So more people in that department that's basically for.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Attorney, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anthony, I'll bring your attention to Design PD LLC and also Double J Animal Hospital. The first one says police KS annual subscription. It's about almost $1,200. Vendor is 14128.
For Double J Animal Hospital?
That's the, the one that follows. The Double J Animal Hospital took $2,2177 in the case for Nero, who was apparently hospitalized and received an admission of the chief. It's not here right now.
I know about that one.
Did you play that?
Yes, I, I do know about that one. I believe it's Sergeant Hayes' dog got sick and they had to take him to the vet and he had to have emergency surgery, but that's the police department's dog. Dude, I did hear Chief talk about that, I guess.
Okay, I know this is. This was just, should've been paid earlier, but we're paying it now. So it's pretty much just cleanup, you could say. It should've been paid earlier in the year, but something happened.
On the Design PD LLC.
Oh, Design PD, okay.
Or the, the one for Double J, Nero just, he just got out of the hospital.
Yeah.
He's $1,089, like Evelyn said, that he became sick after being stored or actually boarded for a remainder, and something happened on his intestines, and they did go in and monitor him for almost, I believe, seven days and got him back and recovered. So that was the cost for the $2,177. Is he okay? Yes, sir, he looks it. What is that annual subscription?
The design. I will have to give that to you on that. And that would be Design PD.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Attorney, further discussion? I know there's a lot to involve, there's a, it's a closing up here for the.
It's a little, it's just close on the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
There's a, there's a, there's a account summary.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of them that I see that are saying insurance slash bonds, non-employed.
I believe. Also, is. Is it in the summary where you got each of them?
It's a account summary at the end page.
Okay. That's just that, that big amount at 339, that's why, this is why the outstanding is so high this year is because of 339, 534. That's just our, we're posting our interest to reinsurance. A little run?
No.
Okay.
Under page 10, 11. And I'm just kind of curious, question I have is if them are.
Fair.
How much are they paying or what they are? And what were those numerous ones on there? Shows insurance.
Okay.
And this.
I see that looks like a picture.
Actually, 101 or 110-101247060, which shows 6,000 for one of them.
Okay.
It's one that's brought up.
Right, yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, there's numerous ones, and adding up, it comes to 171,000.
Okay.
I'm just kind of curious, it's a substantial amount, it's like the, it's what it's for.
Okay, it's mostly insurance payments, I'll get you more detail tomorrow. Yeah.
So that's not reinsurance?
Um, no, 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 sir.
It could be any kind of insurance that you pay.
It might be in the payroll, it's more payroll, yes, sir. I'm pretty, it's pretty much a payroll, I'll get you.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious.
Sure.
I thought that was about the PD design. I guess it's the software that they use over there at police department for email notifications, training, reports, alerts. I mean, I have the invoice right here, but they use sometimes, they use a software. And it's just the annual.
All right, thank you. I need to, I need to. What are the initials, the lowercase, what is that?
General Leesman, she's the one that makes.
She makes what?
She makes the purchase orders, so she, that's what.
Talking about, when they do the description, you do the what department, who made the PO description, see, put that on there.
I got you.
But we can't obsess as well.
What, Anthony, what's that we're paying SWAT? About $5,000 bucks for malware bikes? We have issues with our computer.
It's the yearly thing we pay each year for the, I guess we'd say firewall, firewall, I guess it's, we call it antivirus stuff. They, they pay each year, so we don't need that to watch our computers. So it's pretty much for every single computer that we have here.
Security.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it.
No further discussion, roll call motion.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mayor Trivia.
Yes, resolution passes. Before post, Attorney Dow, can you elaborate a little bit on what's gonna take place Friday? I know we sent out an email that might.
Probably will be the final approval of the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget. So pretty much starting this year's budget, so I can send this to the DFA by the 31st. Because DFA needs this, that report approved by the 31st.
And I'll be elaborating on that in further. Some of these numbers have changed.
Yes.
Some of them have gone to that end of the article, fiscal 2021. Yeah, but it's so since items have changed in value or devalue.
Yes.
That's to collect 2022, yes. So that reflection has to be approved by the city.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
It's not, it's not negative, positive, it's just, it enrates positive, I believe it is action.
Yes.
So the numbers have.
It's a positive, it's, it's just the numbers have changed and the budget I'll prove last or before, so.
And one other, something, look at, I know right here, you guys see, will see, permission for that, we'll see, right, about eight million, $539,000. Pretty much, you can see that as plus. It actually, some of that is bond revenues, so our reality, money's already allocated for projects like Main Street and so forth. So it's a big number, my, yes, it's, it's numbers that are actual, but the funds are already allocated for projects, it's not money that we have. Real, it's not surplus. I always tell everybody, you got reserves, so that's your reserves. Surplus is extra money we have around. Exactly, we don't have a big, we don't have a big surplus, but we are in the blood. But just to say that that revenue's already been allocated for mutual projects, that's why you see a big 8,000, $8.5 million right there. So just want to make sure there's no confusion that's exactly we have the money available for expenditures when you're not paying. eight million, eight point five million dollars right there, so just wanna make sure there's no confusion that says that we have the money available for expenditures, when you have it. It's already allocated for. There's no further discussion. Does anybody got any other comments? Or do you want to go have a final motion? We have that here, just. Are we not going to run it over?
Oh, yeah.
Checked it off.
Post was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. There's any further discussion? There's no further discussion, roll call, will you, Shannon?
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Yes, he is a jerk.